All right, here we go. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the December 13, 2021 Meeting of the Edina City Council. This is our third meeting in December. It's a special meeting, really, to talk about a couple of proposed projects and take public testimony. But we'll run it as a normal sort of meeting, and I want to let everyone know when this world we're operating in, where it's a hybrid situation. We have folks that may be tuning in that want to testify or at least listen to the council meeting, either on cable TV or on edinamn.gov live meetings or on facebook.com/edinamn. And they'll be able to participate in the meeting in a couple of different ways. They can call in for a community comment, and I understand we've got somebody in the audience who wishes to talk to the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda and otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing. So I'm going to ask that person to come forward in a few minutes. But if you want to participate in community comment or the public hearing that's going to take place, either of those public hearings, here's the phone number, 800-374-0221. Conference ID 4628128. 4628128. As you can see on the screen now, give the operator your name, your street address, and your phone number. Press *1 to get in the queue, and then Director Bennerott will bring you in to speak to the council. So we have quite a few folks here, our fellow residents that are here live to testify, I believe, with regard to some of these matters. But we're now going to call the meeting of the city council for December 13, 2021, to order, and we'll ask our clerk Sharon Allison to do the roll call for the council.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Stronton?
Here.
Mayor Hufflin?
Here.
Next matter on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. And we've got a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone on the council or staff that wishes to amend the agenda in any form? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Anderson second, so we approve the meeting agenda as published? Any further conversation? Hearing no more discussion, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published? I mean, is there, all in favor of approving the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we're going to go on to community comment, and I understand there's one of our fellow residents in the audience that wishes to talk to us a little bit about a goose issue. And so come on forward, it seems like a great way to start tonight, have a little variation on theme here.
Yeah, a little levity tonight, huh? But John Connolly, 7309 West Shore Drive here in Edina. And thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, and members of the council and staff for addressing just a short concern tonight. Situation, you know, I live in that neighborhood area, use the path and through the Fred Richards area, and it's used heavily by the residents around there. And during the late fall and through the last couple of months, the geese have just seemed to multiply. And it didn't start out that way a couple of years ago when the path first went in, but now it's gotten progressively worse and to the point where it's bad. I wish I had evidence to take photos, but I hope I can assure you that it is bad, unavoidable, in fact. Background, again, this didn't start out, during the summertime, you don't see, you know, they're there, but you don't see them as much because they're eating the grass and they're staying off the path. But the path is like a magnet in the fall. The only thing I guess I would look at and why I'm approaching is that how can you solve this in a short term and in the long term? I mean, you've got a master plan for that area, and hopefully it doesn't involve a huge flock of geese that litter the pathway, because that's an asset, and you're putting a lot of money in there. I saw the trees that the city has planted, I've seen the investment, I see what you guys are trying to do there, and I just don't want to see it act as like kryptonite to people to use that path. And perhaps a boot from Superintendent de Golf or other DNR, et cetera, Three Rivers Park District, has some simple solutions that at least mitigate some of the fallout that is occurring. So I just, I just think, you know, I'm concerned, and I think it's a lot of money that is being spent in that, in investment, and it just, I think, needs to be addressed at some point in the future to maximize that investment.
Yeah, thanks for coming. And I don't, at least I didn't know personally about the fallout problem. So I'm happy to learn about it, pleased to learn about it, and we'll figure out what we can do about it.
Yeah, I wouldn't have brought it to council, I probably would have normally done it to, you know, Park and Rack or Public Works, because they're the ones who maintain that area. But because you are master planning for that area, I think council has to be aware that, hey, there's some things that can be done to make this a better experience for the residents, as well as the businesses that are going to be using this area and future investment.
Good, agreed.
So I hope that's considered in the future.
All right, we'll take it up with staff, and we'll hear in a couple of weeks what their suggestions are. So thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you for your time.
All right, Director Bennerott, do we have anybody that wishes to address the council during community comment on a matter that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing?
No, sir, I don't have anyone on the line at this time.
Okay, good. Well, not good, we'd be happy to visit with them, but that allows us to move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is the heart of it this evening, which is, once a year, we address these proposed street reconstruction projects. And tonight, we've got two significant proposals, one that's tied in with the Morningside neighborhood and our stormwater management work we've been doing over there for the last couple of years on developing a strategy to try to protect the, kind of, the most vulnerable part of our town, excuse me, to changing weather patterns. So we've got that plan in place, and I think accompanying that now is this proposed roadway reconstruction project. And then there's one proposed for Blake Road from Scriber all the way north. So I'm going to turn it over now to Director Milner, I think he's going to set the background for us for these two matters, and then we'll take them on one at a time.
Exactly, Mayor, members of council, thank you. I want to thank the council for being here tonight. We've got another meeting on your agenda, and I know you guys are very busy. And thanks staff for being here to put this on tonight, and we really appreciate you taking the time for this special meeting every year just to talk about street reconstruction projects. So I'll go through how we pick our projects, kind of a general schedule, and then the assessment policy here, kind of that's common between the two projects. So one of the questions is, why my street? So you can see the map on the left has the two areas circled that we're going to talk about tonight. They're brown on this map, and they're scheduled for construction in 2022. One is Blake Road on the left-hand side, and the other one's Morningside up in the northeast part of town. But they're both part of that proactive pavement management program. Streets are grouped within neighborhoods, it really maximizes the economies of scale, extends that pavement life at a similar timeframe within those neighborhoods. And how we select them, it's based on the pavement condition, it's based on the original construction age of those streets. We look at those underground utility issues and see if there's any of those that arise some of these neighborhoods up to be reconstructed, and then we look at our transportation issues and goals, like sidewalks and bike lanes, and then just traffic calming measures we need throughout the city. And this ties right into the budget work plan, that pillar number one, infrastructure meets community needs now and in the future. So we look at our multimodal transportation network, the bike and ped master plan for roads, sidewalks, bicycle facilities we'd like to do within town. One of the goals is to continue to provide clean and safe drinking water, sanitation and wastewater, make sure those systems are up to par. And then stormwater, just like the mayor mentioned, flood and drainage service, and you'll see that in our Morningside, and then clean water, also our service waters, to clean those waters. Again, if you're interested in infrastructure, the state of Minnesota got a grade of a C a few years ago, mediocre from infrastructure, because we need some investments in there. And I know we have that big federal infrastructure bill that's coming, we don't know the rules yet, but I would say continue to check this website, raiseourgradeMN.org. Continue to tell your legislators that we need continued funding for infrastructure. They're not hearing from constituents, so we can all help raise Minnesota's grade together. So just explain where the names come from on these projects, you'll see, you know, Morningside, D and E. So they're broken into maintenance groups, and they're divided into groups based on the original plat and similar sized lots. So we use the naming, the Neighborhood Naming Convention for that main label. So the map on the right, this is Birchcrest as an example. And then we divide it into little pieces that are more able to be built in a one construction season. So you can see it's divided into groups, A, B, C, and et cetera, if they need it. So on the right, it's Birchcrest A, Birchcrest C, and B, you can see that. So you'll hear that tonight, and that's where those naming conventions come from. We're going to be talking a lot about the streets and what's seen to the eye, but there is a lot of infrastructure underground that we need to maintain. So this chart just shows some of that stuff. So we have 136 miles of storm sewer pipes with 12 lift stations, nearly 200 miles of sanitary sewer wastewater pipes and 21 lift stations. We have 240 miles of drinking water supply lines with nearly 14,000 metered service connections and 5,000 service valves. And then you can see the treatment plants and the water towers and the other things that make our city function today and provide the services our residents expect. This is a chart of our pavement condition index. So the pavement condition index is a score from zero is basically gravel, 100 is a brand-new street. So you can see that on the left hand of the chart, it's called PCI, you'll hear that term a few times tonight. So zero to 100, this gives us kind of where we're at in the last, since 2010 to 2021. So you can see in 2012, we kind of hit that low point, we were at a 51 towards the bottom of that fare for pavement condition. And you can see it's gradually been increasing over the years till we're at a 76 today. We had a little dip there with COVID, and then we had, again, thank the council for the increase in that street maintenance budget in 2017 that really affected that line to keep trending upwards. So we're here tonight to make sure we can keep our street pavements in that good, good condition there on the top of the PCI chart. So tonight, you'll hear Morningside, D and E, that's a local street project, and there's 254 properties. Blake Road is a municipal state aid street, so that means we get money from the gas tax and license tab fees from the user distribution fund to help pay for that. So our assessment policy says that fund's going to pay for 80% of the cost, and the other 20% of that is funded by special assessments. There is a caveat that we changed our assessment policy, in fact, Blake will be down closer to 15%. So that's the municipal state aid is at Blake Road tonight. And we have 58 properties associated with that project. Morningside, D and E is unique, we've got a very large flood risk reduction project going on. These are the graphics from that, we really aren't going to speak to that too much tonight. We want to really focus on the street reconstruction project and the pipes and the stuff that are in the street to get to our new treatment and new flood protection here in Weber Park and that also inundation area between Lynn and Kipling. So general schedule, tonight we do the public hearing. Council's going to consider approving this at the next council meeting. If it gets all approved, we intend to do construction in 2022. The final assessment hearing is one year after construction, so we would be back in front of the council October of 2023 to conduct that final assessment hearing. So it gives the residents some time to plan for that cost now before the assessment hearing in October of '23. Our assessment policy, assessments are assigned to benefiting properties per state statute, Chapter 429. So if recall, this body updated that policy in July, and we're transitioning the taxes over 16 years. So first step is we're removing all retaining walls and subcuts from the assessment tonight. And then we're also doing the first year reduction. So the assessments tonight for Morningside will be roughly 74% of that street cost. And on the Blake Road, it's 15% because of that MSA street policy. What that covers is the street pavement, the gravel base, any restoration items, and indirect costs for engineering, finance, soil investigations, mailing, stuff like that. On the restoration side, that includes irrigation systems, pet fences, landscaping, turf establishment, and driveway pavement, so that's within that restoration. Those repairs are part of the project, we did not pull those out. And recall, we're working as a staff to enhance that turf establishment. We're meeting with contractors, and we're looking at qualification-based bids to try to do one contractor for both these projects next year. So we're continuing to look improvements, how we can do better from a turf establishment standpoint. The assessment payments, so in the fall of '23, they'll get a notice, and the residents have four options, depending on where they are in life. They can pay that entire amount upon receiving the bill to afford, avoid future interest charges. They can pay 25% of that amount, and the balance rolls to property taxes over 15 years. Or they can roll that entire amount to their property taxes over 15 years. If you meet certain age and income requirements, they can defer those payments, and that's managed by the assessing department. So the benefit question may get asked tonight, we did have NAGL appraising, do general benefit letters again. Each project tonight has those letters. The range of benefits within those letters supports the assessments we're proposing tonight. So we do support it, staff supports it, and the benefit question was supported by those general benefit letters that were completed. So if there's any questions on the general intro, I'd be happy to take those. If not, we'll hand it over to Aaron and Charlie to start the Morningside project.
Back running, thank you. Questions for?
Director Milner, at this point in time? All right, good. Did you happen to make any calculations on, you know, having taken out the subcut, what that might have meant in terms of individual property assessments? Had we not eliminated the subcut and treated that just like we do curb and gutter?
Yeah, roughly, we're 25% lower, so Morningside's at $9,300. So if we would say it's $10,000, that'd be $2,500 less because of that change in the policy. So Morningside benefit there, and Blake Road is $7,000 assessment, so that's probably about $1,500 difference. So significant changes right out, you know, year two of that change.
Yeah, good, thank you for that. All right, you want to proceed with the first project, and that's the Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction proposal for Morningside, D and E?
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers, residents. Thanks for letting us present to you tonight the Morningside, D and E Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project. My name's Charlie Girk, I'm a project engineer with our engineering department, and I've earned its slur, our assistant city engineer with us as well. The Morningside, D and E neighborhood is located in the northeast quadrant of the city. It's kind of bounded to the north, the project limits are bounded to the north by West 42nd Street, to the south by Branson, to the west by Oakdale, and to the east, Grimes Avenue. There's 254 properties in the project area, there's about two miles worth of road being reconstructed, about 32,000 square yards of street pavement. We're going to replace eight existing fire hydrants, and there's 46 existing sanitary manholes. Moving into the existing water main conditions, the bulk of the project area has six and 12-inch cast iron pipe. However, some of you who may remember that in 2015, we did do a lining project in the neighborhood. There's a moderate amount of water main breaks that exist in the neighborhood. There's some original fire hydrants left, there's a large number of hydrants and gate valves that have been replaced in the last 10 years. The bulk of those were replaced in 2015 with that lining project. And there's some gate valves ending the end of their useful life. So what are we going to do in this neighborhood for water main? We're going to replace the water main that wasn't lined in 2015. The bulk of that water main is south of Morningside Road. It's basically reached its end of its life. We're going to also replace the water services project-wide. If we recall, there's a water main, and then there's a service that runs from the water main to each home. We like to replace those when we see that they're aged and there's areas that have lots of reconstruction. Morningside has lots of redevelopment. We're going to prevent those roads from being dug up multiple times in the future by replacing those services now. And because of the age of those services, they're prone to leaks, which is the bulk of the water main breaks in this neighborhood. We're going to replace all the gate valves that are more than 10 years old that haven't been replaced. We're going to upgrade the remaining hydrants that are noncompliant to our standard connection with the fire department. We're going to verify that the hydrant spacing's correct and that it meets current fire guidelines. And then all these utility improvements for water main will be paid out of the water main fund. Moving on to the existing sanitary sewer conditions, it's about what you would expect for an area of its age. It's mostly clay pipe that's in fair condition. There is some inflow and infiltration or INI occurring in the system. INI is when groundwater or surface water enters our sanitary sewer network. That water then becomes a cost to us, because it goes into our sanitary sewer and gets metered by the Met Council, because our sanitary wastewater is treated by the Met Council. So we're build the clean, clean water. So when we reconstruct neighborhoods, we look for these opportunities to correct the INI issues that exist. Localized sanitary pipe defects exist, that's a crushed pipe, a pipe that's separated, something that can't easily be repaired through a lining process. And then many of the manholes are actually in pretty poor condition. Picture on the right there is of a manhole in the project area, it's a brick manhole. We don't see a lot of these, even though Edina's a pretty old community. We don't see a lot of these left anymore, because they don't stand the test of time, quite a few of them have here. So what are we going to do with the sanitary sewer? Well, some of the improvements that we're proposing is to line all the clay pipe in the project area. We're also going to do some spot trunk repairs where we have those crushed pipes or those offsets that can't be lined. That'll help reduce INI, and it'll also make sure that the pipe lives on another 80 years. The way we line the pipe is non-invasive, it's done through the surface. The picture on the bottom right there is of a lining process. It's done on the surface from manhole to manhole, essentially a liner is blown into the pipe, inflated, cured in place. We're going to replace the existing manholes and castings and the rings in the neighborhood that are not up to standards. Those poor-conditioned manholes that are made of bricks or blocks, we're going to replace those with new precast manholes. And all of this work is paid for out of the sanitary sewer fund. Moving on to the existing storm sewer conditions, again, it's what you would expect for an area of the community of this age. The entire project area does have curb and gutter existing. It's primarily reinforced concrete pipes for the pipes that are in the area. The vast majority of the existing structures are in poor condition, and more importantly, as has been alluded to by Chad and by the mayor, the system is undersized. So again, what are we going to do to correct these? We're going to modify the roadway and the storm sewer, then improve existing drainage. Those roadway changes, they're not drastic, sometimes a tenth of an inch or a tenth of a foot is enough to change where the water flows and how it flows. So we look at those, and we look at improving intersection drainage. We're going to replace the curb and gutter, this is a victim of the circumstances of replacing the water main services and doing substantial storm sewer improvements. While the curb gutter is in moderately good shape, when you start removing half of it for the utility services and then another third for the storm sewer, it's actually more expensive and cost prohibitive to piece it together. So we're going to remove it and replace it. We're going to install some drain pipe where feasible. Some drain pipe is a pipe that we install on the backside of the curb and gutter to allow residents to connect their some drain line to. Doing that allows that drainage, instead of it being sent to a neighboring property or to the street or roadway, allows it to be collected underground and put into our storm sewer network. We're going to also incorporate design recommendations from the Morningside Flood Reduction Strategy. We'll talk about that on the next slide. And all these improvements are paid for out of the storm sewer fund, except for those improvements that are being made as part of the Morningside Flood Risk Reduction. You guys have heard a little bit about it, you've seen some things. The pond is its own project, and then along with that pond is improvements in the two neighborhoods adjoining, so Morningside, D and E, and C. And those recommendations made by Barr, our consultant for this project, Barr Engineering, were essentially, take the pipes that we have in these neighborhoods and make them bigger. And we're not talking go from 15 inches to 24 inches, the vast majority of the pipes are going to be 48 to 72 inches. 72 inches is how tall I am, I could crouch through the pipe if I had to. That's a lot of investment, that's a lot of excavation, a lot of work to do to reach that ultimate goal that the community's looking for, for the flood reduction, and it's going to cause impacts. This isn't, you know, a lot of you have seen the other projects for the neighborhoods. 12-inch pipe, you can do 200 feet a day. 72-inch pipe, you can do 50 feet a day. And on top of that, this is 15 feet deep in some areas. So while the pipe is large and it's going to be somewhat painful during the process, we're going to have a really good result at the end. So the pipes that are being upgraded are in Branson, Grimes, Morningside, Crocker, and West 42nd. West 42nd will have that 72-inch pipe, and that's going to take quite a bit of coordination between the contractor, the city, and the residents to make sure that that goes in. And company with that, we're also going to have to relocate some of the existing other city utilities. We're going to have to relocate some of the sanitary sewer, and we're going to have to relocate some of the water main to make this possible. Moving on to the existing roadway conditions. The streets were resurfaced and curb and gutter were installed in 1978. That section of asphalt installed in 1978 was two inches, our current standard is four. The existing street whiffs vary between 25 and 35 feet, the average is about 28. And there's primarily silty sandy soils with some poorly graded sand and clay sections. Chad had mentioned the PCI network, how we're currently at 76. The PCI network has updated a quarter section of the city every year, so over a four-year window, we get a whole look at the city's pavement condition. So the city as a whole is at 76 currently, Morningside, D and E is at 5. As a reminder, zero is a dirt road, 100 is a brand-new paved road. What are we going to do to replace these and improve these? Well, we're going to construct a new roadway section. Our current section is four inches of asphalt and eight inches of base material, as opposed to what's there right now is two and six. Beyond that, we're also going to make sure that we take that existing asphalt and that existing base material, and we're going to use what's called a reclaim process, and we're going to recycle it in place. Reclaim process basically takes a big grinding wheel, and you grind up the pavement that exists, and then you mix it with the base material below. And by doing that, you don't have to haul in a bunch of material, and you don't have to haul out a bunch of material. So it's a new subbase. There are some subgrade corrections anticipated. If you're familiar with the area, Morningside, as you head north, kind of goes down in elevation. And as you get to that lower land that was naturally swamped 100 years ago, there are some poorer soils. There's not that many in this project area, but in the future project areas, we'll see a lot. If we have a rainy summer, we might also see some more significant subgrade corrections. We're proposing street whiffs of 24 to 30 feet. 24 and 27 are the living street standards, that's the vast majority of this neighborhood. The 30-foot section we're proposing at Grimes and Morningside, near the church. We understand that that's a busy, busy intersection, there's lots of vehicles moving through there at their peak times on Sundays and so forth. So when church is in session, we wanted to make sure that the vehicles had a little bit more passing room, and as you're dropping off people and picking up people, there was more room for that activity. Those 27, 24-foot street whiffs are part of the Living Streets Plan. Remembering that the Living Streets Plan is a policy and a plan that was adopted by the Edina City Council with multitudes of goals. In this project, we're going to incorporate those goals of having a more multimodal network by using those street whiffs and those street sections. We also look at reducing impervious space when possible, or runoff when possible. To date, through the reconstruction program, we've removed about six and a half acres, 6.6 acres of impervious space through the city. This project, unfortunately, we're not going to remove that much more. The project's roads are already very narrow to begin with, we have limited right-of-way, and we're not really changing too many areas, but we will reduce the amount of impervious slightly. Also, part of the Living Streets Plan was reducing the lifecycle costs. Sometimes throwing money at a road doesn't solve a problem. The reconstruction plan ends up saving money in the long run, so a long-term vision there. Looking at the pedestrian and bicycle improvements. The area already has quite a significant amount of pedestrian facilities. Most roads have one sidewalk, if not two. So we're not proposing any pedestrian improvements at this time, and we'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. We will, however, replace those sidewalks that we damage or are in great need of repair in the areas that we do utility improvements. We're also going to replace all the pedestrian ramps with ADA ramps to meet current codes. The bicyclist and pedestrian master plan does call out a bike lane on Grimes Avenue, but we're limited in right-of-way, we have a 40-foot right-of-way section as opposed to our 60 or 66-foot typical. With that, you have a 24-foot wide road and a sidewalk on each side of Grimes. You're really limited in what you can do. So staff at this time is proposing a bike boulevard on Grimes Avenue in lieu of that. A bike boulevard is a shared roadway that uses, that's both for vehicles and bicyclists. The vehicles have to yield to the bicyclist, essentially. There's other roads in Edina that are this way, around the water park, there's one, and off of 54th, there's one.
Can we pause there a second? Let me ask you a quick question, I remember years ago when we did this, or several years ago, I think it was over on West Shore. West Shore or Cornelia, we had a bike boulevard over there. And what the residents were concerned about was this big printing on the new street. And so the question was, is there any way to sign a bike boulevard, other than painting large bicycle symbols and the word BLVD on the street, surface of the street itself?
Mayor, that's a good question. The answer is absolutely yes. And so as part of our current guidelines for the bike boulevards, the large markings on the street are helpful. And we have, as you can tell by going through the streets, unless they're getting patched, the pavement markings hold up pretty well. But we also do signage, too. The bike boulevard is not an incredibly common way to provide bike facilities, but it is something that, when you, it's kind of our last option, right? Because of the right-of-way constraints. But we do have markings on the road, and we do have signage on the road itself as well. And Edina actually does have a publication trying to teach about all the different bike lanes that we have or facility types that we have.
It seemed to me that when you had the bike boulevard symbols painted on the roadway around Lake Cornelia at Roslin Park, that was fine. When you're over on the north side there by the pickleball courts, and really isn't a residential neighborhood, it's by a park. But boy, when you could see that big printing on the streetbed, brand-new streetbed, in a neighborhood, in a tight neighborhood where the houses are close together, it really had quite an impact. And I get that. I mean, that's a good thing that people are seeing it and recognizing this, they're sharing the bikeway or the roadway with bikes. But it strikes me that signage, vertical signage, might be just as volatile. Anyway, I'd be interested to see what any of the neighbors think about that. Or have you got any neighborhood input on that issue?
Not on this issue, no. Additionally, there is guidance from the Federal Highway Administration and from MINDOT, essentially, on how to sign and how to do street markings for these types of things. And that's what we typically follow. We could look into reducing the size as well or finding another way to do both, but it's kind of key to do both, just so the drivers are well aware.
All right. Yeah, well, just as a cautionary note, I'd just say, take a look then at whether you could reduce the size of the print and the symbol that's on the streetbed itself and still comply with those regulations. Anyway, just to, go ahead.
Thank you. Adding to that a little bit, as you head north through what will be next, 2023's reconstruction project in Morningside that's proposed, Grimes does go into St. Louis Park, and this also lines up with the master plan for St. Louis Park's multimodal transportation. Moving back slightly, talking about sidewalks and pedestrian improvements in the neighborhood. We did look at continuing the sidewalk on the west side of Grimes. As you head towards 42nd Street, West 42nd Street, there is a gap in the sidewalk network on the west side. We did look at this, actually, in 2014. We bid out the project, but it came back to be too cost prohibitive. Looking at the project area again and looking at the impacts that we would have on the, as you come down Grimes, you'll notice the grade starts to change, and we start getting pretty steep right here. This would require quite a bit of retaining walls and a very minimal amount of right-of-way that we have. And then as you flatten out on the slope towards West 42nd, we have these large trees that would absolutely have to be required to make that work due to the right-of-way. So at this time, staff's recommending not to continue that walk extension. What we've talked about is, as these properties may redevelop in the future, we'll look at that, and if we see them come up for redevelopment, we'll look at that opportunity again to fix that gap. We also did talk to both those residents, and the impacts were, again, very large. Talking about the right-of-way impacts, as we're aware, when we do construction, things get ripped up, things get damaged. Sidewalks, outwalks, stairs, driveways, beautiful landscaping, pet fences, irrigation, I could go on all night, right? All of those items are typically gathered pre-construction, pre-design. We do what's called a topographic survey and a topo survey. That's all the existing conditions that are out there. So that survey is not only a person out there doing the physical engineering survey, but we also go out there and we take photographs of all the landscaping, the driveways, and all the unique features that are in the area. So when we're doing our design, we know what was there, and we know what we needed to put back and what we need to put in the construction documents and the contract documents to make sure that they're replaced. All these items are replaced, in kind or however the resident may see fit at the time. We know we hear a lot of problems with turf establishment sometimes. As Chad alluded to, we're always trying to improve that. Beyond that, there's... I'm going to pass it off to Aaron now to talk a little bit more about the finance side of things.
Thank you, Mr. Girk.
Thank you, Charlie. Can you hear me? Thank you, Charlie, for that summary of the existing conditions and the proposed improvements. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and residents, thank you for the opportunity to present the estimated project costs, as well as the estimated assessment amounts and the proposed schedule. My name is Aaron Ditzler. I'm the Assistant City Engineer. I'll start with reviewing the estimated project costs, as well as the funding sources. Starting with the roadway, we have two funding sources, special assessments and property taxes. That is new in 2021 with the revised assessment policy, which I'll touch on in the next slide. Special assessments cover $2.285 million, and property tax is $950,000. Roadway total is $3.24 million. Utility improvements, sanitary sewer, $614,000. Water main, $1.91 million. Storm sewer, $1.99 million. That does include concrete curb and gutter improvements. It excludes the flood risk reduction strategy, which I'll touch on in a moment. $4.52 million are the utility improvements funded by city utility funds. Sidewalk improvements, primarily the ADA improvements at the pedestrian curb ramps, total just shy of $87,000, funded by the pedestrian cyclist safety or PACS fund. The project total, $7.84 million. That does include construction contingency, engineering, clerical, and finance costs. The flood risk reduction strategy costs, $12.25 million funded by city utility funds. Approximately 3 to 4 million of that cost will be implemented with the Morningside D and E project in 2022, and the remainder of that cost in 2023, north of West 42nd Street. Special assessments are proposed for the project and are assigned to benefiting properties of public improvements per state statute, Chapter 429. As Chad kicked off in his introduction summary, council authorized an assessment policy change this year. Assessments are going to transition fully to property taxes for over 16 years, which are shown in the chart on the slide. 73.64% of the roadway costs will be assessed to property owners in the Morningside D and E project per the assessment policy. Accessible roadway costs include roadway and driveway removals, asphalt pavement and the gravel underneath the asphalt, restoration, including topsoil seed, driveway restoration, landscaping, et cetera. Indirect costs include engineering, finance, soil investigations, and mailings. Again, 73.64% of the roadway project costs will be funded by special assessments. The remainder of the roadway costs covered by property taxes. Just to reiterate, improvements not being assessed are improvements related to sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, sump terrain, curb and gutter, sidewalk, retaining wells, and poor soil replacement, otherwise known as subcut. Assessments are distributed based on residential equivalent units, or REUs. There are different REU factors based on different land use classes used to compare properties to a single-family residence. Single-family residential properties are assessed 1.0 REUs regardless of the lot's size or the streetfront footage. There's one additional land use class in the project area, that's the Morningside Church, which will be assessed an REU of 0.2 per 1,000 square feet of floor area. Transitioning into the estimated roadway assessments, again, there's 254 properties in the project area. Single-family homes will be assessed 1 REU. Those are shown in blue. Corner properties with one side street outside the project area will be assessed 0.5 REU. Those are shown with yellow. These properties here on 42nd will receive the remainder of the 0.5 REU with the 2023 project. Exceptions to the corner properties at 0.5 REUs are this pink parcel here at 42nd and Grimes. This parcel was assessed 0.33 with the 2014 roadway improvements. So it'll be assessed the remaining 0.67 with the 22 project. These four corner properties in green were assessed fully 1.0 with previous roadway improvements, so they'll be assessed 0 REUs with the Morningside D and E project. The Morningside Church, 3.04 REUs. We also have one additional parcel at Latell Street. This is a city parcel. This is a stormwater infiltration basin. It's not a developable lot, so it'll be assessed 0 REUs. So how do we get the estimated roadway assessment? We take the roadway project costs, $2.285 million, divided by the total number of REUs, 245.71, and we get $9,300 per REU for the estimated roadway assessment. This is an estimate. It's not a final assessment amount. Final assessments are final until after construction is complete. There is construction contingency included in this estimate, so we do hope this amount does go down after construction is complete. State statute, Chapter 429, has a special benefit test that says that special assessments are valid if the assessment does not exceed the special benefit as measured by the increase in market value due to the improvement. Therefore, we did hire a licensed and qualified appraisal firm, Nagel Appraisal Incorporated. They determined that the preliminary market benefit was $14,000 to $20,000 per single-family lot. And again, the estimated preliminary assessment, $9,300, which is less than the preliminary market benefit range provided by the report. That report is available on the Better Together Edina Project webpage. Assessment payment options, Chad already referenced this once, but it's important enough to mention again. Final assessment amount, we mailed one year after the project is complete, in September Payment options include paying the entire amount upon receiving the bill to avoid future interest charges. So that's within the first 30 days, interest-free. You can pay a minimum 25% interest-free within the first 30 days. The balance rolls over to your property taxes, spread out over 15 years with interest. And also roll your entire assessment amount to property taxes, spread out over 15 years with interest. That interest rate will be determined in September 2023. Historically, it's somewhere between 3 and 4%. The previous assessment hearing in 2021, the amount was actually less than 3%. Final option, you can defer the assessment payment if you're 65 years of age or older and meet specific income requirements. Before I conclude, we'll review the project schedule. The staff communicates with property owners three years in advance of roadway reconstruction. Staff invited the Morningside D and E property owners to an open house at the Public Works Facility in summer 2019. Due to COVID-19, staff prepared two video presentations, one last winter and one in fall 2021. We mailed a postcard to property owners to be able to view those videos on the Better Together Edina Project webpage. Staff reviewed the engineering study with the Edina Transportation Commission at its meeting on October 28th, including the recommendation for the bike boulevard on Grimes Avenue. Tonight is the public hearing. Council will hear testimony from residents. Residents can continue to provide testimony until noon, December 15th, when the public hearing will close. Council will make a decision whether to move forward with the project design and authorize bidding at its regular meeting on December 21st. If they choose to move forward with the design, the plans and specifications will be prepared this winter. Contractor bidding would occur in March and April 2022. Assuming we get favorable bids, council would consider awarding a construction contract, and construction would begin in spring 2022. Construction would conclude in fall 2022, and the final assessment hearing would be October 2023. So in conclusion, staff believes the project is feasible, cost-effective, and necessary to improve the public infrastructure. We make a recommendation to provide a motion to close the public hearing at noon, December 15th, and to continue the action, the item to the December 21st City Council meeting for improvement number BA 461, the Morningside D and E project. That concludes the presentation. Thank you for your time, and at this point, we can take questions and comments from mayor and members of the council.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ditzler. Does anyone on the council have a question for either Mr. Girk or Mr. Ditzler at this point in time? All right. Yes?
Thank you.
Council member.
Thank you both for your presentations. Mr. Ditzler, are we seeing material costs stabilizing? Are we pretty confident in this estimate that we'll be able to pay for it if material costs are erratic?
Yep. Great question, Mayor Jackson, excuse me. Yes, certainly, we're hearing that material costs maybe going up, you know, 20%. There's definitely potential, some shortages. We're already hearing about some of those things. That's why it is really important to get these bids out early, so we can get those materials. And contractors have already been purchasing materials, kind of in preparation for those sorts of things. We have accounted for some of those things in our cost estimates, so we're confident if things hold on that we'll be able to do the improvements within these cost estimates that we provided.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Standby. Excellent presentation. I think it was very, very thorough. We're going to open this up now for public testimony. We will take folks that are in the audience first that wish to inquire about this particular project, testify in any particular manner. And so what we'll typically do, and I think Mr. Ditzler mentioned this, is that with this, in this hybrid world that we're operating in now, we're taking testimony online and we're taking testimony live in the council chambers, what we've been doing is closing the public hearing the following Wednesday after the city council meeting. In this case, staff suggesting that we leave the public hearing open until noon on December 15th and then continue the action on the item to the December 21 City Council meeting. So it's a couple of days here that people would still be able to put in some testimony. So having provided that information, remember, you've got three minutes, and you'll get a green light when you start to testify or inquire of the council. And then when you see that yellow light come on, you've got 30 seconds. And please then think about wrapping up your comments, so that when the red light strikes, you can finish up your comments, and then we'll be able to treat everybody about the same with respect to the timing on the public hearing testimony. So the public hearing is now open for testimony. Let's go to folks in the audience. Does anybody want to come forward and testify regarding this proposed assessment in the Morningside D and E neighborhood? Okay. Well, we're going to have an interesting discussion up on Blake Road, I guess. All right. Seeing no one coming forward, Director Bennerott, do we have anybody in the queue? And again, just a reminder, if you want to testify online, you need to call in 800-374-0221, And the conference ID is on the screen now, 4628128. Give the operator your name, your street address, your phone number, press star 1, and get in the queue, and Director Bennerott will bring you in to testify to the council. and get in the queue, and Director Bennerott will bring you in to testify to the council. Do we have anybody online that wishes to testify regarding this?
I do have some callers on the line, but right now, no one is indicating a desire to speak. As a reminder to those on the call, to get in the queue to speak, you need to press the star key, then the number one. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number one. If you press the pound key, it actually takes you out of the queue. With that, I do have our first caller. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Ms. Mindy Ailer? And Mindy, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Ms. Ailer, welcome.
It's Mindy Ailer at 4244 Crocker Avenue. And I think there may be a delay in what we were watching online versus live council meetings. So am I too late for the comments on the Morningside Reconstruction?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to make a comment on the Morningside Reconstruction regarding the Grimes Avenue Bike Boulevard, and thank you, Mayor, for bringing up questions about it. I'm also a member of the Transportation Commission, so we have been looking at the suggested bike routes in this area. And I do want to stress that I believe we really should have bold markings on that street on Grimes, both the signage and the roadway painting. And that's for a few reasons. One, Grimes is designated as the bike way because it is the only through street through the area, but it also has a rather steep grade, which somewhat inhibits visibility. So I think it's very important that we keep the markings very clear to slow traffic, to make it a very safe accessway for bikes through that area. And I've had at least one resident that has commented to me that they wished we had actually done more in terms of trying to continue the, to continue the, that it actually have a divided bike lane as opposed to simply a bike boulevard. But I do believe that the engineering staff has done their best to fit what we'll work on the street with. And that's my comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ailer.
I do have another person in the queue. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Chris Kennedy? And Chris, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
The line is now open.
I think she might be testifying. We can't hear her. Ms. Pendy, can you hear us?
Operator, will you please unmute the line of Chris Kennedy?
Can you hear me?
Mr. Kennedy, your line is open.
Okay. Can you hear me?
It might be helpful if you turn down your TV at home because of the delay while you're speaking.
Can you hear me? Okay. Never mind. I'm trying to call in.
That's much better.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead and testify. We can hear you.
Okay. I have a question about, there is some woods that are shared by St. Louis Park, Minneapolis, and Edina, and they are going to be affected. Can anybody speak to that?
I couldn't pick that up.
She's asking about the trees that will be removed as part of the flood mitigation project?
All right. This is not about the flood mitigation project, Ms. Pendy. This is about the potential street reconstruction project that would be involved in redoing streets in Morningside. Did you want to express, you may not have an opinion or want to ask any questions about the street reconstruction project, but the council is willing to hear what you have to say about the tree issue, if you want to go ahead and tell us in a succinct way. Ms. Pendy, I think one solution here might be if we're going to keep this public hearing open until Wednesday, the 15th, at noon. And if you want to write to the council about your concerns, I think that might be the best way to handle this, because we're having a difficult time hearing you.
Our next speaker tonight is Mr. Paul Thompson. Operator, will you please unmute Paul's line? And Paul, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
The line is now open.
Thank you. Paul Thompson, 4244 Crocker Avenue in Morningside. And my question is, what does it mean, defer payment? So I'm over 65, and I'm curious about what does defer mean?
All right. We'll handle that question, Mr. Thompson, when we, well, we can handle it now, I imagine. We could, we could do that instead of after the hearing closes and on the 21st. This seems like a question we should deal with right now.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor.
Standby, Mr. Thompson. We're going to explain the deferral process.
So as far, one of the payment options is you can defer if you're over 65 years of age and meet specific income requirements. So I believe it's Centipan County that sets the income requirements. So if you're below that, you can defer that. If you're above, then you don't qualify, and our assessing department would have that information. They won't have that information for 2023 yet, those income ranges, but they'll have that for September 2023.
And I'll just add that the assessment amount is still put on that property, and it collects increases with interest up till the time of either that homeowner pays it off or the property is sold, is when they typically work out that assessment. So it doesn't go away. You just don't have to pay it, but it's still on that property until the property changes hands or they decide to pay that off.
And how is the rate of interest computed that the homeowner would pay on a deferral situation, a qualifying homeowner?
I believe it's still that 1% over what we can borrow the money at, just like all the other assessments.
All right. Did you get that, Mr. Thompson? It's what, the interest cost is 1% over whatever we spend to borrow, whatever we have to pay to borrow the money, which is usually the lowest rates around, but still, still interest.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes.
I got it.
I do not have anyone else in the queue at this time, and it looks like everyone on the line has spoken. Because it has been a minute since, well, much longer than a minute since we started this, I think it's safe for you to move on with your agenda.
All right. Very good. We'll hold a couple of minutes or a minute or so, and then we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing at noon on December 15th, and then continue it for action until
I do have someone else who's joined the call. Caller, if you're interested in speaking in the Morningside Public Hearing, please press star one on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number one, to indicate your desire to speak. Otherwise, we will assume you're either just listening or you plan to participate in the next hearing. I'm still not seeing anything, so I think you can move on.
All right. Very good. Thank you. With regard to Resolution 2021-123 and the proposed Morningside D and E Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project, which is embodied in Improvement Number BA-461, is there a motion to close the public hearing in this matter at noon on December 15th and continue the action on this item to the December 21 City Council Meeting?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Member Stotson, second by Member Pierce, to close the public hearing on the matter stated on December 15th and continue the action on the item to the December 21 City Council Meeting. This involves Resolution 2021-123, which is the Morningside D and E Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project embodied in Improvement BA-461. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Director Milner, we're going to move on to our last public hearing matter of the evening, and that is apparently the main event. We've got folks here that have concerns they want to express to the council, and we're eager to hear them. So we're now going to move on to proposed Resolution 2021-122, which is the Blake Road Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Improvement embodied in BA-463. Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Like you mentioned, we're going to talk about the Blake Road Reconstruction Project. And tonight, Evan Acosta, our graduate engineer from our department, is going to help me present this project. He's going to do the first half of it, and I'll close it out, and then we'll stand for questions at the end. So Evan, go ahead.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Acosta, welcome.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the mayor and the members of the council and the residents here and online for allowing me to speak tonight on the Blake Road Reconstruction Project. This street reconstruction project is a one-mile section of Blake Road in the northwest quadrant of Edina. There are 58 properties in the project area, with the limits being Scriber Road and Spruce Road. This project is located just west of the Interlock and Country Club. Blake Road is an MSA route, so this will be a state aid construction project with stricter design and construction criteria, as well as funding notes that Chad will hit on later. If you look at the graphic on the screen, you'll see that Blake Road naturally separates itself into two parts. In the graphic, Blake Road is annotated with the green arrows. Interlock and Boulevard is annotated with the orange arrows, and what we are going to be calling the land bridge is circled in red. The north portion of Blake Road is characterized by a higher volume of traffic and a slightly wider street than the southern leg. As Chad mentioned in his introduction, the surface of the street is only a portion of what we will be replacing as part of this project. Much of the replacement lies underground. So starting with the water main, our existing condition is six- and 12-inch cast iron pipe throughout Blake Road. We do have a moderate amount of breaks north of Interlock and Boulevard. The neighborhood does have some original fire hydrants that do not meet the current city standard. This picture on the slide is of an original fire hydrant installed between Lake Ridge Road and Oak Bend Lane, and you can see the challenges that fire hydrant would present for fire suppression purposes. The gate valves in the neighborhood are also nearing the end of their useful life. We plan to replace all gate valves and hydrants as part of this project. We will additionally be replacing portions of existing water main and services with a combination of trenchless and open-cut methods. City staff will be evaluating hydrant spacing to ensure that public safety standards are met, and will be adding hydrants as necessary for fire suppression. We will also be adding a new section of water main and service stubs between Waterman Ave. and Interlock and Boulevard, where there currently is no water main. These improvements will be paid for by the Water Utility Fund. The sanitary sewer in this project area is made up of nine-inch clay pipe in fair-to-good condition. Inflow and infiltration, commonly referred to as INI, is occurring throughout the system where groundwater is entering through root intrusion and encrustation, or through damaged manhole rings and castings. As Charlie hit on in the Morningside Project, the city does pay for sanitary sewer treatment by volume through the Met Council, so any amount of groundwater infiltration presents additional cost to the city. We are proposing to install a cured-in-place pipeliner and make spot repairs to the sanitary sewer system as necessary. Cured-in-place pipe is a trenchless process of building a new pipe inside of the existing pipe. The benefits to a cured-in-place pipeline are the convenience of not needing to excavate down sometimes 10, 15, or 20 feet to install a brand-new main, and the installation of a cured-in-place pipeliner is exponentially quicker than open-cut, saving us days or even weeks throughout a project. Additionally, we'll be replacing all of the manhole rings and castings as part of this project. These improvements will be paid for out of the Sanitary Utility Fund. The last underground public utility we will look at tonight is the storm sewer. Currently, Blake Road has some portions with concrete curb and gutter, some portions with asphalt curb and gutter, and some portions with no curb and gutter. The existing underground pipe system consists of a variety of pipe sizes and consists of corrugated metal, reinforced concrete, and PVC pipes. Most of the stormwater in the project area is routed through Mirror Lake, while the rest of it goes to smaller stormwater ponds. We are proposing brand-new concrete curb and gutter throughout the entire project area. City staff will evaluate the existing catch basin and storm manhole locations and conditions and replace as necessary, as well as meeting MSA standards. Sediment structures will be installed where feasible to prevent sediment from entering Mirror Lake or other nearby stormwater ponds. We will also be installing sump drain where feasible, and the benefits of sump drain are that residents will have the opportunity to connect their sump pump or yard drainage to the city's storm sewer network. These improvements will be paid for by the city's storm sewer fund. This section of Blake Road was originally constructed between 1937 and 1945. However, there have been varying levels of maintenance on this one-mile section of Blake Road since then. Blake Road is 30 feet wide south of Interlock and, and on the land bridge, and 36 feet wide north of Interlock and. The pavement condition index, or PCI, in this neighborhood is a 25, with 0 being a gravel street and 100 being a brand-new roadway. And as mentioned earlier, the city's average is currently 76 for PCI. Our soil borings indicate that the roadway is primarily silty and clay-sand base material. The AADT, Average Annual Daily Traffic, on the south portion of Blake Road is 3,279 vehicles per day, while the AADT on the north section of Blake Road is 9,758 vehicles per day. Our 85 percentile speeds in this neighborhood are 19.6 to 34.2 miles per hour. The section of Blake Road that we call the land bridge, which is pictured currently on the screen, experiences very long vehicle queue times throughout the day that extend down into the south portion of Blake Road. Additionally, there is currently a mixture of and lack of pedestrian and bicycle facilities throughout the project area.
So next, we'll talk about the proposed roadway. So you can see here, this is a typical section shown on the right-hand side. This is our proposal for the north section of this roadway. So just as you enter in from the Hopkins border, heading south from Spruce. So starting on the west side or the left-hand side of the graphic, we're proposing an eight-foot shared-use path that meets state aid standards for a shared-use path for the width, then that's off-road facility to really guide and give room for families and people that are interested to cycle but don't want to be in the street. So that's the use of the eight-foot shared-use path. Then we have a six-foot concrete bike lane. We're doing similar to what we did on Valley Road and Tracy, where we have one big concrete gutter pan, so it's a different material, and that's for the bike lane. And then we're putting in the narrowest drive lanes that we can based on state aid standards to really slow that traffic down. So two 11-foot drive lanes made out of bituminous material, and then another bike lane on the east side of that segment, running at six feet. And again, that's a all-concrete bike lane. As we transition down around the curve south of Waterman, as we come in along Mirror Lake and into a roundabout, we'll show you that concept, we're going to widen that path out where there's no residential properties to 12 feet wide to make more space for the railings and the users there within that roundabout area, because we know that's going to be a highly-used intersection. And then south, south of Interlock and, across that land bridge, we're going to transition to a six-foot sidewalk, and that'll be on that south end of the project. So I'll show you some more graphics related to that. So here's a graphic of the roundabout at Interlock and Blake. This will address some of those, it will improve traffic operations. We have those long queuing lines from the south. This will improve those queuing situation. It'll slow traffic. Traffic needs to go through this core. Traffic needs to go through this corridor and slow down within the roundabout. We will continue with the existing parking restrictions through the corridor, and we are not proposing any upgrades to street lighting except the required lighting around the roundabout. I forgot to introduce our team that's also here from WSB. They're helping us design the roundabout and everything to the south because it is such a challenging project with Mirror Lake and all the permitting requirements with the DNR and the watershed, and then the big sheet piles that we need to do to create space. So this is an overview of that south portion of the project. So here, just as we get out of the residential area from Waterman, we'll transition to a 12-foot-wide shared-use path through the land bridge. This segment here will be a 12-foot-wide shared-use path, and then we'll have a bike bypass on the north. And as we get south of Interlock in here, we'll do a five-foot, actually a six-foot sidewalk right on the back of curb, heading south with no Boulevard, because it's, none of the properties are really adjacent to that, so there'd be nobody that would maintain that Boulevard space, so we shrunk that down. If you notice on the graphic, all these jagged lines, that's the sheet piling. I'll show you more details in there. All along the lake, that's a huge cost to this project, but it allows us to create space for these pedestrian improvements. So you can see we zoomed in. Here's those 12-foot trails here. Again, it's eight feet north of Waterman and down to the curve. A 12-foot allows us to really put in that width that we need to meet our transportation and bike and pedestrian facilities. Here's that sheet piling symbol that'll go along that edge of the water, and then we'll have some sort of railing along there to protect the pedestrians from going over that sheet pile wall. The twin loops also comes through. It comes from the east, from the Grandview District, along Interlock and crosses the land bridge, and then goes down Interlock. And so in the future, we can use these 12-foot-wide trails to extend that twin-loop idea that we have in our bike, ped, master plan, and extend that west on Interlock and Boulevard. The sheet piling again creates space, so we can shift the road slightly to the east over here and limit impacts, create space for the bike and ped facilities, the shared-use paths on each side. It really supports the road, so it doesn't slough into the lake, protects the road, and it limits erosion along that edge of the lake for this project. This is a picture of what the sheet piling would look like along the water. It would be driven in, and there'd be a top cap on there. We don't have that quite figured out. That'd be a final design item, and then we put a railing on there where needed. Or if it's close enough to the vehicles, then we may have to have a guardrail of some sorts or integrated rub rail there to keep vehicles from going through that. We are recommending phasing. When you think about the amount of traffic, nearly 10,000 vehicles per day go through here, we're thinking two to three phases. Could be north, middle, and then south. The biggest impactful one is going to be when we're doing that roundabout and the land bridge. That's really going to be an impactful time when that's closed. So otherwise, you know, if it's a south segment, we still have the north legs open. When we're doing the south, the north legs will be open. Like I mentioned, there's extensive permitting dealing with the lake and the sheet piling and the DNR and the watershed districts, so WSB is helping us work through all those permitting processes. And then if you recall, Center Point Energy finished their beltline project right at Scriber and Lake Ridge Road there. We're continuing, they're continuing their work right in before we come in. So they'll do a phase, and we'll come in behind it, but they're extending that beltline, 24-inch main, gas main, right through this area, across the land bridge, and up through Hopkins, where they ended right around Waterman Avenue. So that project is a big coordination for this project also. Existing right-of-way, this is probably the biggest concern. I think you're going to hear from the residents in the room. We've been hearing these things. So we are concerned, and we want to do what's right for the residents and protect things. So there is landscaping features, irrigation systems, and pet fences, as some of the photos. The photo on the left is a very unique retaining wall that was hand-built by that resident near the Hopkins border. But you can see that space of grass. That's almost 10 feet of space, so we want to put the eight-foot trail in there. We feel it fits really good within that section. We know trees are a concern. You're going to hear about trees tonight. We have some further to the south, where we're within that 10-foot range again. We think we may need some small walls. We already worked with the city forester, went out there. We know that people have been treating three elm trees for 20-plus years. There's an oak tree that they've been taking care of for many, many years. We do not want to lose those trees. So we've got a different technique from the city forester where you use high-pressure air to expose the roots. You can either clearcut those a little bit on the edges if you need to, or you can move them out of the way. And it's better than just taking a backhoe and ripping at those roots. So there's some techniques that we plan to use here to protect those trees, and we'll work with those residents once we get a little further in the final design to know exactly the impacts, how far and how close to the trees. But then also if we need retaining walls, because some are a little higher. So you know if you've driven around town and looked at some of our other shared-use paths and sidewalks, we build little retaining walls to protect the tree. And if that isn't possible, then we may shrink a trail just a little if that really is, there's no other way to save that tree. So we're going to work with the owners, work with our city foresters, who are the key on this one, and we'll continue to engage with those residents on the tree matter. Easements. We do need a few easements around the roundabout. So that one driveway there, they're willing to close that driveway and help us install the roundabout. So I'm working with a couple of the properties there for easements. We do need a state aid variance, two of them actually on this project, and we're going in front of that committee on Thursday of this week. So two of the curbs curves do not meet 30 mile-an-hour design speeds per state aid standard, so we're asking for a variance just to keep doing what's there. The one south of the land bridge is 20 miles an hour. The one around Waterman, coming just south, is 25. We're going to ask the committee to allow us to use those 20 and 25 mile-an-hour curves instead of the 30. And then this is an opportunity to put in another Edina entrance sign. We have one at 66th and York. We have a place to put it. We own the property just west of Blake and just north of Spruce. That could be an opportunity there to put this sign. Again, we have it 66th and York, but just another location to have this Edina entrance sign as you come into town. Estimated project cost. So roadway is very expensive, you know, nine-plus million dollars, and a lot of that is because of that sheet piling wall to make room for all those improvements. Majority of that is paid out of municipal state aid. Again, we are not assessing for that wall. That's considered a retaining wall, and we're not doing subcuts. So a lot of that cost is right out of the state aid dollars. You can see assessments, $272,000 for assessments. Sidewalks, just under half a million dollars. That'll be a combination of state aid dollars and PACS Fund, Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Fund. Sanitary sewer, those lining projects of 233,000, that's a city utility fund. Water main, just over a million, and storm sewer, just over a million. Both of those are utility funds, and maybe a little bit of the storm would be MSA. So in total, we're just over $12 million. Pretty expensive project because of the sheet piling, and we want to do it the right way in there. And in order to do that, we need that sheet piling again. All these costs include contingency, like we talked about, the escalation potentially with some of the rising costs, includes engineering, clerical, and those finance costs. So special assessments, it's assigned to benefiting properties of the public improvements. So this will cover a portion of those roadway costs. So it's roadway, it's gravel base, asphalt pavement, some of the restoration items, landscaping, seating, irrigation system, and those indirect costs. The estimated assessments, we have 58 properties. You can see those highlighted on the graphic on the right, and that equals 38, roughly 39 residential equivalent units. So the properties that are in blue in color, that's a one REU. The yellow is a half of REU. And then there's some other unique ones based on, one is a church, and a couple others were already assessed with a previous project and a previous assessment policy. So that's why you see the .67. That was a two-thirds. Now we did a one-third previously, now we'll do the final two-thirds. So similar to the Morningside, we had a different one-third, two-third policy at the time. Again, we'll subtract all those sheet pile walls, any other retaining walls and subcut, and we're going to assess roughly 15, just under 15% of the remaining costs. When they do the math, that comes to an estimated assessment of $7,000 per REU. And the payment options, one year after the project, we would have that final assessment hearing in the fall of 2023. You can again pay that entire amount upon receiving that bill to avoid those future interest charges. So you can roll or pay 25%, roll the balance over to your property taxes over 15 years, or roll that entire amount onto your property taxes over 15 years. And again, there's that deferment program if you're 65 years of age and meet certain income requirements. That's an opportunity if you meet those. Again, that assessment doesn't disappear. It's just on that property until it's either paid off by that owner, or usually it's as the sale of the property and it's negotiated then. Real similar schedule to what Aaron talked about in Morningside. We had an open house in 2019, and then we had two video presentations with COVID in March and October of 2021. ETC did review the study. We've had the public hearing here tonight and hoping for a decision on the 21st. We would open bids March, April of next year, construction in 2022, and that final assessment hearing again in the fall of 2023. So we believe this project is feasible, cost-effective, and necessary. It can really improve the pedestrian network and the vehicle network in that area, not to mention the utilities. And when you're ready, we would suggest making a motion to close the public hearing on noon on Wednesday, December 15th, and continue that action until December 21st. I'll stand for questions, but first I'll just explain the photo here. I think this is a real good photo of what's going on in corridor. You're standing on the Hopkins border right now, looking south. So you're right at Spruce Road, looking south. There's those retaining walls I mentioned earlier, those hand-built ones. So if you start on the left-hand side of the graphic with those power poles, the road is not centered within the right-of-way. It's kind of shifted to the east, closer to the power pole. So we're hoping to get an extra foot potentially along the power poles to make a little bit more room for the trail on the other side. So imagine that curb line being shifted slightly to the east. We'd have that six-foot bike lane, two 11-foot drive lanes, which is narrower than the two drive lanes you're seeing here. Then there'd be another bike lane, six-foot, and then that eight-foot shared-use path right in the back of curb to fit in this graphic in front of those retaining walls that you see there on that grass space. So you can really see the condition of the pavements here. You can see kind of that space in that corridor that we're looking at, and I think you're going to hear a lot about those trees a little further down the corridor here, the elm trees and oak trees that I mentioned earlier. So with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for Director Milner? Member Stotan?
Can you go back to the roundabout chart or graphic? Just wondering if you can explain, you know, for a pedestrian or a cyclist, can you give me just the traffic pattern of how somebody would get from one side to the other?
Yeah. Great question, Members Stotan. I should explain a little bit in the colors here. So anything in red is concrete. So concrete curb along the edges, concrete curb along the edges, and then these medians as you enter the roundabout, you see those on 70th and Tracy and Valley. This is all concrete here. It's a little smaller roundabout. We can't landscape it, but a big truck would come through and run over that edge and then exit out this way. Here you can see the wide bike lane started here along this area, but a pedestrian coming from, you know, from the south here would use this six-foot sidewalk along the west side. They cross onto the 12-foot trail. At this point, they could either head across. I don't know why they do that yet, because we don't quite have the segment of sidewalk all the way built to Grandview. There's one missing piece. But in the future, they'll be able to cross this crosswalk. We'll have a little refuge island in the middle, so pedestrians only have to cross one lane at a time, looking one direction. They'd get on the other side and go here, and we're going to continue that sidewalk to the end of these project limits, and then we have a little segment to build to the east. If they're continuing on the trail here and they live up in these few properties here, there'll be a crosswalk for them to cross and get to the properties. And if they continue walking this way, it'll be a 12-foot wide to get around the corner, transition to an eight-foot wide where the residential properties go, and then it's going to connect into the concrete wide sidewalk trail that Hopkins built a few years ago, up through Hopkins. And this is really a direct connection to the new light rail facility. We've had property owners right here that say, "I can't wait. I work downtown, and I can't wait to ride the light rail." So I already have people that are excited about this facility, be able to access that and not have to drive downtown, not have to drive to catch the bus or anything. They can walk right from these properties, a few blocks into Hopkins, to catch the light rail.
And would that be the same for cyclists as well?
Cyclists could choose where to go. So they're going to be, here's the bike lanes. This is an offshoot where they can choose to, either if they're comfortable, to stay in the road, or they can exit off, use the trail, come up here and exit back on. This here is a little six-foot trail too, for bikes to exit right over here, get on that facility for a little while, and then get back onto the bike lane if they so choose. So there's kind of a on and off they can choose to do around the roundabout, where you have more of those interactions with vehicles, and it's just a little safer. Many of the cyclists might be comfortable, and they'll just ride right through there.
And then what happens just west of that where it bends and goes north?
So then here, they'll be on the bike lane all the way. Or they can choose just to stay on that shared-use path. If you're a user that's not comfortable to be around vehicles, you just stay in that, stay on the west side, and it's going to go from 12 feet to eight feet as you head right up in here. We're going to be transitioning to that eight-foot because of those impacts and concerns with trees, right-of-way, retaining walls and stuff like that.
So at those pinch points, there's going to be more room than there is now for pedestrians and cyclists?
Exactly. Much more room where we don't, we have on-street bike lanes, but they're substandard. So now we'll have standard bike lanes on the street, plus off-street for families, people that aren't comfortable riding in the street. Just give them more options for people to utilize this corridor for bike commuting and stuff like that.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions? Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What is going to be the impact on the water quality of the lake? Will it have any, will it change the water quality either way?
We're going to look like Evan mentioned. It's probably a good one for Evan, to install those stormwater structures that catch sediment. So we may have a few out here ready, but we're really going to try to put those in as right at the last structure before it goes into the lake. So water quality, we should be installing some of those structures and making it better with this project.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Member Anderson?
Yeah, thank you, Director Milner. Could you slide back to Slide 25, please? Okay, so now what's pictured, I think the drive lanes, the new drive lanes would be at 10 feet, if I recall.
We have them at 11 feet right now, but we could go to 10, but we're concerned about going quite that narrow with the type of truck.
Okay, so 11. What is pictured here? What are these drive lanes?
Probably 14, 15-ish, so they're wider than they need to be.
Okay, so 14 to, we think 11.
Because the road's 36, and we have five-foot lanes, 10, 20, about 13 or 14 feet.
I see. Okay, thank you.
What's an example of an 11-foot driveline? Where do we find those?
58th, I think we did 10 or 11. That's a pretty good example. Some of the striping you see, like on Gleason, we're starting to do 10 or 11 just with shoulder lines, so it's becoming more common, because we can put up all the signs we want. Cars aren't going to slow down with signs. You really need to narrow them, and that's really the benefit of having concrete bike lanes with narrow lanes of different material. They don't want to cross in there, and that, you pinch them, you make them feel a little uncomfortable, then they slow down. And that's what we want to happen when we got bikes on the road, and then also a lot more pedestrians using that shared-use path.
Yeah. I think 58th is 11, if I remember right. Yeah. That's a good comparative, good visual. And it'd be good for folks to, you know, that are wondering, what does 11-foot drive aisle look like? Go and look at 58th.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions for staff? This is a public hearing matter. We're going to open this up now for public testimony. Folks, when you want to come up and address the council, make sure you give us your full name and address, unless you have some overheads that you want to use. I think going to the side podiums works best. Again, you'll have three minutes to tell us what your concerns are, and you'll get a yellow light, and you'll have 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. So let's start the public hearing process. Director Benrod has wiped everything down. Keep it as sanitary as we can have it. And welcome hearing for any of you that want to address the council. Please come forward.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Rob Frimerman. My last name is F-R-I-M-E-R-M-A-N, and I'm at 6229 Maloney Avenue, Edina. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Simon Pupers got a little wet. Keep it off there. A couple of things. What's that? Yep, 6229 Maloney Avenue. Thank you. Just a couple items that I like to ask for the mayor and the cities to look into within this plan. Couple of them are the crosswalks in the area. I think our request would be that if we could get painted lines, we do not want lights flashing where you press the button. This is a neighborhood. We really want this to kind of be dark at night and respectful. But there's an opportunity across Maloney to have kind of painted lines and signage But there's an opportunity across Maloney to have kind of painted lines and signage to give pedestrians right-of-way. We do use that crossing quite a bit to connect the sidewalks going down Maloney into the parks. I know we've talked about trees. My ask would be that if we do have to remove, we would look at not only the count, but the maturity of those trees to try to get as large of trees we can get back. So we do realize that along the land bridge, we're going to lose a lot of foliage there. We just will. The other item is, within the actual roundabout, the plan allows to be concrete, and we understand that there might be some larger summers that have to use it, but having that entire thing be flat concrete just really kind of ruins that area. If there's any way to have, well, widened curbs around it, but still have greenery in the center, our ask would be, in some of the other roundabouts, there's actually kind of a mountain system. We could put foliage and greenery that also breaks the lights, kind of as they circle that a little bit, to create some screening to the neighborhood, would be the ask. In addition, we do know that that roundabout's going to be busy, and while there are crosswalks and other options, we would, I mean, the ask would be that we also don't have lights there too. We want to really cut down the light noise. We already get that with the lights as, with the, the cars that is, that are there. And then the big item is the retaining wall. We, we get, that's a needed thing. We need the space in the road, but that steel facade just really industrializes the area. It just really changes the characteristic. Realizes the cost thing as well. So whatever we could do to, I mean, concrete stamping against it, some of you can get vines, and other options to put like boulders up against the bottom, some way to soften that. It's just that industrial look of having that steel wrap that entire lake as you come through would just really change the characteristics of the neighborhood. So whatever you guys can do to look into options there. And we do realize that that's a cost factor. We don't really want to push that onto the select residents that have to really pay for this in our neighborhood. So whatever the city could do to help pitch in on those aspects to kind of get the beautification up in that area would be the ask. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Got a whole list here. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frimer. Folks, come on up if you wanted to. This is your opportunity.
Thank you. My name is Bill Piro. I live at 6324 Waterman.
Your last name again, Bill?
Piro, P-I-E-R-R-O.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council and staff and, and public. The cost to me is, is relatively high. I've been told by two realtors that Blake Road doesn't raise the property value of my house. It actually has kept it down and limits it. And the project is one that I believe should come out of the general fund, because it impacts more than the people, those 58 housing units along there, the commuters that are going by every day, the people that don't live in the neighborhood. So I, I would like us to look at other sources of income to pay for this. There's infrastructure money coming. Mr. Milner and I corresponded back and forth about the American Rescue Plan Act, and I guess that money can't be used for it, but are there dollars that are planned out of the city funding that can actually take some of that money and use it instead of hitting the people along Blake Road? I've talked with a number of the neighbors. I went out and canvassed up and down Blake Road, and pretty much everybody is, is concerned about the, the dollars to it. Liquor store funding, can that be used? I don't see a few of us having to pay for what is the big benefit for so many other people. And then that traffic, 10,000 to 11,000 trips is not the people that live in the neighborhood. We're not generating that kind of traffic. And with all these, the percentage of traffic, can you break it down to the local residents versus those commuters that are using that collector's street? And again, why are the few people being asked to pay for it? I believe at one time, Mr. Neal, you mentioned that special funding referendum money was not going to be going up and downs, that we would have built-up money left over for different projects. So possibly there could be something there. But I want to stress that the city talks about, it's become apparent that the city may not be able to justify the benefits of the cost to each property owner as required by Minnesota law. So that's something that's right on the website. We talk about it, and I just don't see it as being a real benefit, just to the few that you're asking to pay.
Thank you, Mr. Piro. Anyone else wish to come up and address the council on a matter of concern to them with regard to this proposed project?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Peter Hemsted, and I live at 402 Blake Road South. Thank you for the opportunity to explain some of my concerns tonight. I'm a longtime resident of Edina. I graduated from Edina East in 1977, and I've lived on Blake Road since 1985. I'm not here tonight to try to convince you that we don't need a sidewalk on Blake Road. We do. It's a busy street. What we don't need is an eight-foot wide shared-use path right next to a six-foot wide buffered bike lane. Between a sidewalk for the pedestrians and a bike path for bicyclists, all the bases should be covered. To build a shared-use path because someone might be uncomfortable with either the sidewalk or the bike lane makes no sense to me. I was told this might be for young children, but the fact is, there's a total of four children living on the west side of Blake Road, from Spruce to Mendelson. So I'm pretty sure that if any of those four kids wanted to ride their bike on the sidewalk, no one would really complain. And let me clarify that I'm only talking to the straight stretch of Blake on top of the hill from the church to the Hopkins border. When Blake turns the corner and heads down the hill towards Interlock, and it's understandable someone might be uncomfortable. I would be uncomfortable, because that's actually dangerous and certainly needs some improvement. So why am I against a shared-use path? First of all, an eight-foot asphalt path would eat up more of our lawns and look strange in front of our homes, as opposed to a traditional concrete sidewalk seen around Edina and around the country. An asphalt path is obviously not going to hold up over time nearly as well as concrete, but my main concern is the trees, one of those tree people that's been referred to earlier. We have several large mature shade trees in the 400 block of Blake that might survive a five-foot concrete sidewalk, but are most likely going to die if we put in an eight-foot shared-use path. I myself am actually a horticulturist, but I've also spoken to the city forester about this, and he shares my concerns. By the way, I attempted to send the city council members a couple of photos about the trees earlier today. Hopefully you got them. I'm not sure how that went, but hopefully you did. Anyway, there's several large elm trees my neighbors have been injecting for several, for many years against such elm disease. They're beautiful stately elms, like we used to have all over Edina. In my own yard, I have a large oak tree that no one planted, because it was already there when my house was built in 1904. It's one of the original native trees in Edina, and I would be very upset to lose it. I also don't think that losing large mature trees fits in very well with Edina's sustainability plan. And when I've brought up the tree issue with the city engineers, they've been listening, and that's great, and they've assured me that they will try not to kill the trees or else replace them if they do die. The Udo's say it's going to be impossible to replace these trees in any of our lifetimes. So the simplest way would be just to narrow the size of the path from eight feet down to five, or maybe six, and that would go a long ways towards preventing damage to the trees. So anyway, thank you for your attention.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Steven Ward, 421 Blake Road South.
Give us your name again, would you please, sir?
Steven Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Blake Road and Blake Road combined with Interlock and Boulevard are the only north-south roads between US Highway 169 and State Highway 100, going from Highway 7 all the way to Vernon Avenue South. This road passes actually through three cities, St. Louis Park, Hopkins, and Edina. This makes Blake Road and Interlock and Boulevard a major thoroughfare. As was presented earlier tonight, you know, nearly 10,000 vehicles go through every day. I wish I had a toll booth there, because I make a fortune. Thousands of people in multiple cities will benefit from this reconstruction. So I would like it explained to me how it is fair and logical for just a few people, 58 units, should pay for something that's going to benefit so many. Now, I actually spoke with Aaron earlier today, and I asked him the question about, I asked his question to him, and he told me that approximately 20 years ago, the Edina City Council made a decision that they would use special assessments to fund roadway reconstructions. He also agreed with me that it wasn't entirely fair. I think that this is a poor policy for several reasons. One of them is this policy does not take into account the situation where thousands will benefit from only a few paying for it. It's very unusual to have a residential road that has this much traffic flow. This is a situation where I feel funding should be done by like property tax, where at least a city is paying for it. Adding the roundabout is a huge cost. Usually adding a roundabout is an asset. I admit it, that's usually a good thing to add. However, in this situation, with the high traffic flow, you're going to get really little value out of it. I mean, and adding the walkway is also a huge cost. And it's not really a necessity, it's even a kind of a luxury. So I recommend removing the roundabout and the walkway from this roadway reconstruction. Thank you very much for listening.
Ted Rutherford, R-U-T-H-E-R-F-O-R-D, 300 Blake Road. Mr. Mayor, Council, folk, thank you for having this hearing. I just want to thank the city engineers, because they've been very communicative and open to suggestions. Thank you for that. I also agree with Mr. Hemsted about the eight-foot wide asphalt, when we've got such beautiful, if you can call concrete beautiful, but it, it lasts and it's strong. Does it need to be eight feet? If you could sink it or narrow it to maybe five or six feet, there'd be more chance for water to seep in for some of the mature trees. We also have some elm trees that are some of the originals that we treat yearly to try to save those, and some original oak trees that would be nice to keep. One of the things that brings us to Edina is the aesthetic of living here. And even at the outskirts of our town, which we're on the border of Hopkins, up the northern end, it's a much different place. And, and it's nice that that sign will be there at the north end of Spruce to welcome people to our city, but part of it too is our property, trees, aesthetics, artwork, things like that. And I just want to thank you, gentlemen, for being so communicative with all of us and our individual concerns and our community concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you, would you come back up for a moment, please?
Yes.
And tell us, where on Blake Road are you concerned about the trees? Between what two streets?
Between Spruce and Interlock, or the Mirror Lakes.
Spruce and Mirror Lakes, all the way down, past, past Maloney and?
Yes, sir, the big trees and.
Pass the church on down?
Probably to the church is the end of the huge trees, or the huge original hardwoods, the surviving elms and the ash and oak trees.
Mayor, it's just south of Waterman Avenue is kind of where the.
Just south of Waterman?
Yep, so that's the segment, and the one block between Bellmore and Maloney are, have the most trees, and you've heard a few residents already testify in that area.
And they're, they're very close. And even though it's Hopkins, if you look at Interlock and Park, you can see how many huge trees, when they repaved, that they had to remove through that area. And I think, it's a Hopkins issue, but there's an example of how much that can change a neighborhood or the feel.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, I know there are more folks out in the audience that haven't testified yet that may wish to, but let's go to some of the folks that may be listening in. Again, if you're listening in and wish to testify and get in the queue, the number's going to come up on the screen that you need to call. And it's 800-374-0221. There's the conference ID number, 4628128, 4628128. Give us your name and address and, and phone number, and then press star one, and Director Benrod will get you lined up to come in and testify on this matter.
Our first caller for this public hearing is Carter Vargo. Operator, will you please unmute Carter's line? And Carter, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
The line is now open.
Hello, Carter Vargo, 6408 Maloney Avenue. I'm uniquely positioned in that I'm at the corner of Maloney and Blake, and I'm also in commercial construction, so understand the cost of sheet piling, the cost of escalation, and understand what we're getting into with a project like this. I have quite a few concerns at three minutes, quite frankly. I don't know that I can quite explain them all. I'm standing outside staring at the area, and I'm very concerned. So number one would be the eight-foot asphalt driveway, or asphalt sidewalk, or asphalt shared path. I think that the, the connection of Hopkins eight-foot concrete and our asphalt, and then back into concrete at the south of Blake Road is just inappropriate. It feels asking for kind of a mediocre surface when we are surrounded by concrete surfaces. So I'm, I'm not quite on board with that. I do agree with the need for a concrete or for a shared path bike lane and a shared path sidewalk, whether that be eight, six, five. I would like to keep the trees, or whatever we can do for that. I think that's important, but I'm, I'm excited about that idea. I think that will slow traffic down. I think it's necessary in this area to slow traffic down, but I'm very concerned about the asphalt side of it. I think that that's just asking for a subpar surface, not necessary. I'm also concerned about the cost, like others have stated. I think it's inappropriate that the 58 should be bearing the cost of what thousands will use, and quite frankly, probably not the 58 people that are on that path. For us, we are close enough, that it's easy enough for us to drive or, or, or walk the three blocks to what will be the, the light rail, and yet all 58 of us are going to bear the burden. I'm also concerned, even though I don't live down there, the sheet piling, that steel, quite frankly, permanent sheet piling, it's what I do for a living. Permanent sheet piling is incredibly expensive with the cost of steel right now. We've been able to absorb going into a concrete foundation system with a, a temporary sheet piling for a less, much less cost than permanent sheet piling. I don't know what the, the, what kind of exploration has been done into that, but I'm, I'm very concerned that we're, we're going to what is a traditional system of permanent sheet piling, rather than looking at maybe some more untraditional systems that are quite a bit less expensive in today's economic construction market. So I would like that, I would ask the council to look at a variety of options there and not just go to traditional permanent sheet piling in, in the steel as, as the picture showed.
Well, thank you, Mr. Vargo. And if you've got your concerns written down, remember that I think the motion will be that we keep the, the hearing open until noon on Wednesday. So if you want to send those in by email, it'd be good to have those as part of the record.
Okay, I appreciate that. The other thing I would like to say is, my neighbor, who is, who's not able to be on this call, because he's on vacation, also shares all of these same concerns. So whether that matters or not, he's not able to be here, but he did specifically ask that I, I note that Roger Fitzgerald of 416 Blake Road has many of these same concerns.
Give us his address again.
416, and I hope I'm right, it might be 412. I used to be 420, and we changed our address to 6408 Maloney, but I believe it's 416 Blake Road South.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next?
I do not have anyone else on the call at this time.
Okay. Let's, um, let's leave it open in case somebody does call, but maybe you can go back and address some of these questions that have come up, and I think Director Milner anticipates some of them. Let me look at my notes here. Let me look at my notes here. I think Mr. Furman, if I heard his last name properly, these masks make it really difficult to hear pronunciation on some things. Concerned about crosswalks being painted and not have any lighted crosswalks like we might have at 50th and France. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, we don't have any planned at this moment. Typically, we build the street and do the ADA stuff on the corners, and then we see how much use there is. And if it meets our warrants for a crosswalk, level one is pavement markings, like he mentioned with signs. If we get a lot of use, it really has to be a lot to trigger the flashing lights that he mentioned. So for right now, there won't be any of those crossings, but that's what we do typically after it's installed, to see the use and what level of requirements we need on that segment.
And then we've, you know, one of the first roundabouts we put in was over on 70th by the Galleria, and it was a surmountable roundabout, and people cut across it all the time, and there's, but there is a little greenery, I think, in the center of it, and I think that was one of the questions he had too, was gee, can't we do something other than just kind of a bare-bones concrete circle in the middle and make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing? What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, that was our goal going into the project, is to build one big enough so we could have landscaping. We would greatly have to take out, we'd have to take private property to the north and increase substantially the impacts to the lake. So we really had to narrow that down to this smaller roundabout where it really has to be concrete. A truck will not be able to stay out of that center point. You get a moving truck, a full-size moving semi, it's going to go across there with its trailer wheels. Anything you put in the center is going to get hit, and it just doesn't pay to do it. It's just not big enough.
So what I hear you saying is it wouldn't make any sense to put, you know, like over on Valley View and 70th. We've got rocks in there, and you could have public art. None of that works because they're going to probably end up going across the middle of it.
Correct, Mayor. It's just too small in this case, because of the property impacts, the lake impacts there, yep.
That kind of begs the question, why have a roundabout? Why are you recommending it? I mean, I think we've all seen those cars queue up trying to go north, get off Blake Road onto Interlock in one direction or the other. Why a roundabout?
Yep, we had, WSB did a traffic investigation of this intersection. We looked at the one-way stop today. It's only a stop sign on that south leg today. We looked at a three-way stop, we looked at traffic signal, and we looked at a roundabout. The roundabout is by far the best traffic operations to address that major queuing issue on the south. It slows cars down in both directions. Coming down that hill, they're going very fast, so a roundabout will slow them down, which gives an opportunity for pedestrians to make those crossings we talked about earlier. So it's a traffic queuing improvement, traffic operations. It slows, it's traffic calming, it slows traffic, and it also creates a safer space for bikes and pads to make those crossings.
Okay, I think Member Pierce has a question, maybe that came up as a result of one of your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The other concern I heard along with the roundabout conversation was, are we able to mitigate light pollution of those cars coming around the roundabout? Is the only way to do that to have something in the center of the roundabout, or did we look at other options for that?
Well, roundabout, we got to put lights around the roundabouts. That's a state aid standard, and there's lights there today. So they're downward facing, Cobra heads today, we'll have a few more of those. Today, the cars basically do the same thing. You make a turn and the lights go all through the property. With a roundabout, you're doing almost the exact same thing. So we don't see any big changes in headlights. The properties to the north are up a hill, so they actually have screening and a hill to block those lights. I'm not as concerned as some of the other locations in town for traffic lights. I think he was worried about some of the flashing crosswalk stuff on Maloney and that stuff, so...
Okay. And then one other question, just to explain this as you understood it. So I've walked that route to get to crossings where the Cargill facilities are, and I am really nervous when you walk that curve coming down towards Interlocken, right? Where the, are you going to pull it up?
Yeah, Jennifer, can you bring it up? Thank you.
Yeah, so coming right, yep, coming right through there. And then further south, right, beyond the work that we're talking about here on Interlocken Boulevard?
Yep.
Yep, it's still nerve-wracking to walk straight down Interlocken Boulevard. So when I'm doing that, I have my head down, I just walk.
Today? I'm sorry to interrupt, but you're saying today when you walk that?
Today when I do it.
Yeah, there's nothing out there today.
Yeah, today, yeah. And so the question I had, though, we talk about two ways to slow traffic. One, we talk about the roundabout. The other, we talk about narrowing the roads. And so what I just don't understand, if I'm coming through there, so go back to the curve again, if we narrow the roads through that area, why does, why do we think, or why wouldn't that slow traffic down to make it safer going through that entire area? Why do we think the roundabout is the best way to slow the traffic compared to shrinking the roads?
Yep, I think it's a combination. Narrow lanes definitely slow traffic. The roundabout's addressing multiple issues, not just slowing traffic. So when you're coming down the hill, you're going to have to slow down because of the roundabout. If not, you could keep going at 30 miles an hour, and now you don't, now you have a concern with the pedestrians trying to cross, the bikes, and then you would still have this queuing issue of traffic down Blake's. You really didn't solve that problem either. So you're kind of doing a belt and suspenders here of narrow lanes and a roundabout to kind of slow people through this intersection. So do you think it's a good combination specifically in this area? Were we, you know, with the twin loops coming through here some day? We really know there's going to be many more people walking and biking through here, and the light rail that we've talked about in Hopkins.
And then the last question I had, if I could, you preempted the question about the trees when you did your presentation. And so the similar question, the thought of if we need an eight-foot versus five versus six, if we think a narrower mixed-use path, yep, if we have a narrower shared-use path, will that help preserve the trees? Why do we think we need to have it at eight feet? And then along with that, you also talked about a method from the forester to preserve trees. What do we think the success rate of that might be?
Yeah, very good question. So I'll start with the width of the shared-use path at eight feet. When you think about people on a bike and walking, and they're going by each other, so the bike handlebars are pretty wide, you know, you're 30 inches wide, almost, you know, two and a half feet plus some, and then you've got people walking sometimes double-wide. So when you've got that mixed use, it's really recommended in the industry to have at least eight feet. So if we truly believe this is going to be a mixed use, that's kind of the minimum width. The, you know, we showed a six-foot bike lane on the street and 11-foot lanes. You know, we've had great conversations with the neighbors already. When we get into final design, we do potentially have an opportunity not to shrink the eight-foot shared-use path, but the bike lane technically can go down to five feet. So there may be, if we're seeing some concerns with the trees, we could narrow that to a five-foot bike lane in that block or two blocks where the trees are impactful. So we kind of have those cards to play yet when we get in the final design, that we could tweak some of this a little bit because we definitely want to protect those trees because we've heard of the history and the method that they're maintaining them. So we do have a little opportunity there. The technology, the forester told me, he just did this at City Hall right behind here on some oak trees out back. So the oak trees were starting to look stressed, and he believes that when this building was built, it was compacted around those roots, and the tree's been struggling for almost 20 years since this building's been built. So we have this system where you come in with high-pressure air, and you just keep spraying over the dirt, and it blows it right out, and what's left is the exposed roots. And then you can either, sometimes they're all tangled in a mess where they can't really expand and get nutrients and work. He selectively cut some of those roots out and let the other ones just do way better, right? It was just too thick in there, just a ball of roots. That's a technique we could use here. So typically, when you see tree roots coming out to the street, they're not coming out there because there's not a lot of water source. So we've met with him, he has a firm that does this, and he was pretty satisfied with the results they had right here. And as we get through this design, and we say we're going to be close, you know, there's a couple here that, from the back of the walk to the tree, we're at, you know, six feet, eight feet, 10 feet. Some of those closer ones, we'll have him go out, look at the tree, look at the distance, and then we can maybe adjust the lane a little bit. And we still have that opportunity to take that travel from eight to seven, maybe, right in there, and then use that technique for the roots to expose them, have him take a look at it during construction and make some recommendations for us during construction. So I think we got to be clear with the contractor, like, we're going to do these trees and construction around the trees in kind of phases, like expose it, look at it, and then determine what that final section would be.
So it's not either or, we're likely doing, considering both of those as options?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Let's go back to some of the, I think both Mr. Furman and Mr. Vargo were concerned about the use of the steel for the retaining walls to increase the ability of people to get down safely around those respective portions of Mirror Lakes, if you will. Did you look at different kinds of materials, or could we face it out a little bit differently? How would it fit best in nature without having, as Mr. Furman said, creating an industrial look that doesn't fit the sort of nature that's in that area?
Yeah, I know, we, WSB and their structural engineers took a look at it. They looked at the soils, the water. It's a very challenging site, how do you build something there? So they did look at earthen walls, where it was totally just layers of different earthen and rocks, and you put wires around it and grow stuff on it. That was nearly impossible to build. They looked at big block concrete walls like we've done on other areas, and that again was a very, constructability was very difficult with the water. So we really landed on the sheet piling, but I think before the next council meeting, we could kind of provide a summary of those walls for the council and just make sure we're totally recommending that sheet wall to see if there is another option or why we again selected sheet piling versus maybe the big block concrete. So I think that's something we'll get more information from them before the next council meeting. Just make sure we're all on the same page on the 21st.
I think it's a good idea. Show us some of those piling options and maybe some renderings of what those things might look like so we can think that through.
Yeah, and some trade-offs, pluses and minuses.
Couple of folks were concerned about, gee, we got 10,000 cars a day past our place. Why do we have to pay 7,000-some dollars for this? And the sense I had from the testimony was that they thought they were paying for the whole thing, but we know that this is a state aid street, and with a certain volume of traffic on it, we're going to use, and I think it's usually 80% of the cost of the project is going to get paid for by use of those state aid funds that we get. So everybody in Edina is using that money to help pay for the project on a state aid road. And I think you might provide a little bit more information around that distinction.
Yeah, back in the early 2000s, when the council set the original assessment policy, when it was based on REUs, they acknowledged that challenge with, some of these road networks carry regional traffic, so we shouldn't assess 100% like we do on our locals. So that council set the amount set 20% as a maximum of assessment for people that live along state aid routes. We have 40 miles of state aid routes out of 200 miles, and that's the policy we use on that. This one, in fact, if you just do the math, it's actually only 3% of the total roadway cost because of the walls we took out, the subcuts we took out, but the majority, whatever's eligible, that 80% is funded out of the municipal state aid account of the city, which is the highway users fund, which is gas tax and tax. So we already are trying to account for those regional networks, real similar to what we've done on 58th Street two years ago, 62nd four years ago. In fact, any state aid road since early 2000s has been the same policy. They've actually had the benefit of year two of our new assessment policy of reducing those assessments. So this would have been quite a bit higher if we'd still have that old policy.
And then the question Mr. Piero raised was, I think the question he was asking was, does this meet the Chapter 429 test? Is what you, is what he, he prospectively has assessed against his property going to show up and an equal return in the increase in the value of his property?
Yeah, that's what we do. We hire that appraiser to do those benefit letters to make sure. We don't want to propose an assessment that isn't justified with the benefit. The range here, we saw up to $15,000 for the benefit on this project. We're assessing 7,000, so we believe that the benefit is there for this project based on that appraisal's letter.
Okay. A few of the folks raised the same issue that neighbors raised over on 58th Street when we talked about an eight-foot wide shared pathway, and that was, if we have to have that kind of a pathway, setting aside the issue where it might get narrower or wider, why don't we try to have it be concrete so it matches up with the Hopkins pathway and not have it shift over to asphalt? So we got a pathway that has more durability to it, that it's compatible aesthetically with what's to the north.
Yeah, we were open to that discussion with the council. We know it's going to cost about 100,000 more for that segment of trail if we switch to concrete. It's more expensive. We really don't have a preference. We could go that way if that's the wish of the council. We did that on 58th Street. There's a little added cost. When we look at shared-use paths where bikers and runners and walkers are on, typically that is asphalt. That's kind of what you see in the industry in the metro, so that's why we proposed that as a first step. But if it's wide and people don't want to be in the cars, they're going to be on it. So the material, I think we would go with whatever the council kind of heard tonight and maybe some more of the feedback forms at the next council meeting. There is an added cost, but we can add that cost to the project, and it'll be paid for out of state aid dollars most likely.
Okay. I think those are most of the things that I jotted down that folks were concerned about. Did anybody else on the council have anything they jotted down that I might have missed or Member Pierce might have missed?
I had one note here, Mayor, that there was why the sidewalk on Blake? You know, there's only three kids on Blake. I would just like to write to just mention that we build these for the greater neighborhood. We heard one neighbor that walks from one side all the way down Maloney to the park. We know people like to make loops when they're out walking, and this is just, really will benefit that overall neighborhood. We build sidewalks and shared-use paths and bike lanes for the greater community, even though it's on one street in this case, but it's really that greater neighborhood, greater citywide benefit, not just the people that live there. So those, I think, covered everything that I wrote down also.
Yeah, I think that's a good catch. That was one I thought about too when you mentioned it, so. All right, I think we got most of those things covered. Anybody on the council have another question or comment they want to make? Otherwise, we could entertain them. Well, let's check Director Benarod first. Anybody else in the queue?
No, no one else has called in.
Okay. Let's go then to a potential motion here. Is there a motion to close the public hearing in this matter, which is Resolution 2021-122, Blake Road Neighborhood Roadway Potential Reconstruction Project Assessment Embodied in Improvement Number BA463? Close the public hearing at noon on December 15th, and then continue the action on the item to the December 21 city council meeting?
Still moved.
Second. Had a motion by a Member Jackson, second by a Member Stotan, to adopt the motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, I think that concludes the work of the council at this special meeting. Does anybody on the council have any further comment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Still moved.
Or second.
All right. We got a full house on adjourning. Remember, we'll give it to Member Pierce most, Member Jackson seconds. Anything further, any further discussion with regard to potential adjournment? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Carried. Stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming in.